Call the room.
Sure. Mr. Furman.
Here.
Ms. Bernard. Mr. Torres.
Here.
Mr. Lindemere.
Here.
Ms. Navy Dyer.
Here.
Mr. Landsman. Dr. Hans.
Here.
Dr. Tom. Ms. Newman.
Here.
Ms. Summers.
Here.
Dr. Guadalupe.
Here. All right, and we'll move on to public comment if there's any public comment. Who's monitoring that tonight?
Um, I don't see anybody on the online forum or in the chat. So I think we're good.
No.
Is someone trying to say something?
Yeah, it's Christine.
Okay.
I can hear you now.
Okay, good. I'm having a little difficulty with my headphones today. So, um, there was public comment from Lynn McGinnity. She is the executive director of New Gateway. And she asked that we read her statement at first public comment. "I want to personally thank OCHN and their board of directors for keeping their provider network whole during these unpredictable times. The OCHN staff have been helpful and have engaged in ongoing conversations with their provider network to ensure that everyone is well informed and questions are answered in a timely manner. There is a concern that requires your attention that is lingering among many of our vocational providers. Currently, vocational and skill building programs across the country are reporting absenteeism rates as high as 80%. Many individuals are not ready to return to their program as the COVID-19 cases continue to rise more. Individuals that have opted to return are not choosing to attend community activities as they did before COVID-19 due to valid safety concerns and remain in the facility for their services. It will be imperative for the sustainability of vocational providers to continue the cost reimbursement model beyond December 31st. I urge OCHN staff and board members to review absenteeism trends related to COVID-19 as well as community participation on their dashboard as they determine if an extension of this model is necessary. As you may know, the facility rate for skill building is up to 44% lower than the community skill building rate. OCHN may want to consider making temporary adjustments to the facility's skill building rates to reflect the current climate of individuals choosing to receive services in the facilities versus in the community for safety concerns. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter."
Thank you, Christine. So a formal response will be sent to, to that?
Yes, a formal response will be sent from customer services and I'm sure that they will consult with our content experts and with budget and finance before responding.
Great. Thank you. All right, uh, and then again, we'll have a second, um, opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. So we'll move right into the agenda with Anya on our finance update.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, so I don't have anything earth shattering, which is a nice change of pace, I suppose, um, from the last couple of, of fiscal years and kind of all we've been through. But, um, quickly moving into fiscal year 21, we are, um, as it conveniently came up in public comment, we have continued cost reimbursed contracts for the majority of our contracts going forward, um, and we'll reassess that on a quarterly basis. Those that did switch back to the service models, that was in, um, consultation with the providers to get their input on if they felt like their organizations were ready. Um, so the really, the only ones we moved back were the adult services models, um, for adults with MI and persons with ADD. Um, the rest of them, we are leaving it cost reimbursed at minimum until, uh, the end of the calendar year. Um, and what that does is, as you know, kind of allows them to, um, expense and continue to get cash flow, um, to cover necessary costs during a time period when things like the, um, attendance isn't as high or things aren't moving just the same as they were, um, pre-COVID. So our hope again is to make sure that we're keeping a stable network and that has been, um, a priority for us as requested by the department. So we are moving forward with that. Um, the other thing I'm waiting for is, uh, based on the last version of the budget I saw, there was a 2% adjustment to the actuarially sound rates. So I have not seen rate certification letters for that yet. Um, I assume we'll be getting them. Um, as soon as they do, we will be looking at revenue projections again. And, um, in addition to that, the other update I would have is that we are now looking into what was funded very specifically for that $2 enhancement, um, that we've been receiving since April, uh, off the top of my head, um, and that is now going through, uh, 1231. The department, um, will be cost settling that independently essentially, meaning that any money we did not spend has to go back to them. However, any money that we spend over that is not reimbursed by them. Um, so we're working on those numbers right now. Um, as you all know, we did start that whole process a bit earlier than what the state funded. So I'm hopeful that, um, we will not be sending any money back, but we're in the process of collecting those expenses from providers, um, and looking at what the revenue was specifically related to that $2. Um, with that, the only other thing that's starting to happen is the closeout of fiscal year 20, which means year-end processes for us in finance and, um, moving into our audit after that. We do have a little bit of good news with a couple of new tenants that have joined us since, um, October. Um, ACHC is now officially in the building, I was told today as of 10/1, um, and the other, the other company ASE, which is American Society of Employers, uh, is finishing their build out now. So they should be moving in shortly. Um, I think that's everything. Um, I can take questions if anybody has some.
I see someone's hand up. I can't tell who's it is.
Anya, it's Jonathan.
Oh, hi.
Hi. Yes, we, we are now into the new fiscal year. Could you provide us a little bit about the milestones of what happens in the, the next two or three months, the next four, five, six months that we normally go through in every year as we wrap up? Because we've got new board members, so it's, it's really helpful to help them understand that we don't really officially close the fiscal year for quite a while.
Yep. So that's a good point, Jonathan. Thank you. Um, so our fiscal year officially closes on, on 9/30, um, and our new one starts on 10/1. But what happens then is we, we start to go into this process with our providers of basically reconciling and closing out all of their expenses. We start to look at things like, um, did they meet incentives? Did they not meet incentives? How much money did they spend versus how much did we pay them? So they have to go through their full audit process before we even really start to reconcile our books. So their audits are due to us, I believe it's, um, it's usually January 15th, I believe. Um, sometimes there are exceptions to that if there's some sort of delay, but, um, we expect all of their audits. In the meantime, we will be prepping for our year-end processes, which take, um, the 300 and some odd million dollars that was spent and we allocate it, um, by individual code, by service, by, uh, fund source. So, um, it's a very long process that takes a very long time to complete. We're working on automating a lot of it because we are now going to be doing that three times a year going forward. Um, so we'll be waiting for our providers' audits. Um, once those are done, we go through and we reconcile all of our accounts. Um, and then we start to go through the process of, uh, putting expenses where they belong, like I mentioned, with, uh, where, what expenses go with what service codes, any layering on or off that has to be done, um, from an incentive perspective, um, from an administration perspective, and kind of just making sure all of the expense lands where it should. Um, because then we submit a series of reports, um, I think it's 10 or 12 off the top of my head, to MDHHS on, uh, February 28th. They're due every year. Um, and then that, at that point, we will be able to then move on with our audit. So our audit has to kind of wait until we have closed our books officially, which isn't really until we go through that whole reconciliation process with, um, provider costs and, and adjusting costs to make sure they're hitting the right code. Um, once that process is done, um, on March 1st, it's full swing with our audit, um, with hopes of wrapping up, um, in, uh, usually May sometime with a presentation to the board in June.
Did I miss anything, Jonathan? Did I answer all of your questions?
I, I think so. The, the only other piece that is really the, because we're paying our, we're paying our core providers 1/12 of what we budget for them, don't we go through a true-up, true-up process, um, sometime in February in case we've either underpaid or overpaid them?
So we do, it's a little different than that now. It was always 1/12 of their overall budget, um, prior to moving to service models. Now we actually pay an estimate of the service model amount, um, each month, and then we actually reconcile that quarterly, just to make sure that if they've had a big swing, either more or less, um, that we reconcile that cash flow, um, throughout the year, because it can be difficult for them if for some reason there's a significant increase in the people they're serving, for example. Um, that would then require them to have more staff. And so we reconcile that quarterly at minimum to make sure that we're funding enough cash throughout the year. And we also don't like to have, uh, a large amounts going back and forth at year end, just because we like to kind of have an idea of what we're expensing on financial statements that you see is very close to what we actually believe. Um, so what that, that helps me make sure that what I'm presenting to you is the most accurate information I know throughout the year, not just huge swings at the end because we pushed out a bunch of cash that, let's say they did or did not end up needing. You'd see all those swings at year end, but because we do it now quarterly, it kind of trues that up every quarter, um, not just once a year. But we still do that process at year end. It's just a skinny down version of that process.
Okay. So that's what you were referencing when you said we're moving into a, a quarterly process as well as our monthly and year-end. Okay.
Right. Yes. Yep.
Anya, it's Sarah. Just a quick question. Glad to hear that we have some new tenants coming in. Um, are we monitoring safety procedures as related to COVID-19 just as more people start to enter the building? Is that a OCHN responsibility to make sure protocols are in place?
So they would need to follow, um, the, our expected protocols, no different than we, than we would if we were physically in our building. So, um, our facility staff have met with, um, their staff and they are expected to follow, um, the same guidelines that we're following, which are basically those from the health department and/or other, um, sources to get the official guidance on mask wearing and, and, and social distancing and those types of things. So they are following those as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Jonathan, did you have another question? I see your hand raised before we move on.
No, I actually thought I lowered it. So I guess I must have raised it a second time. Sorry.
No, that's okay. All right. Um, any other questions for Anya before we move on or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. All right. We'll move on to, uh, the IT team overview with Diana.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I think everybody knows who I am. I'm Diana Buntz. I am the CIO. And on the next slide, I have along with me.
Hi.
Go ahead, Jenny.
Oh, hi. I'm Jenny Follis, Director of Applications and Business Intelligence.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Excuse me. Um, so this is a organizational chart of our IT team. As you know, I report directly to Dana and Jenny reports to me. Next slide. And then, sorry, here is actually our, uh, team org chart of all of the folks that we have in, uh, the IT department. Next slide. Our department manages all aspects of technology for OCHN. Um, we'll get into more details as we move along this afternoon. Um, one of the big things that we do is we administer ODIN or our electronic healthcare record. Um, we have database administration and data warehouse. And so as you've heard, uh, Anya today talk about the reports that we're submitting to the state, a lot of that has to do, um, with this particular function because, um, we keep our data in a data warehouse for reporting and it powers our dashboards, business intelligence. So the dashboards that we create, all of the reports and the data that we use, um, our IT infrastructure and cybersecurity. So that would be phones, help desk, you know, AV, um, and security, and then training. Next slide, please. From a technology strategy, and you know, first off, I want to say, I think it's really, for me as a CIO, to be able to work in a very technology-forward organization is fun, it's rewarding, and, um, you know, it seems like we've always got something going on in the realm of technology. So one of the things that we are, is we are a very data-driven organization. We have lots of dashboards and reports and data available for staff that we are able to use, and providers that we are able to use to be able to make business decisions, be able to monitor quality and contract compliance. And we really want to make, oh, there's, sorry, I'm on the wrong, wrong one. Um, we want to make sure that we provide really good customer service to, um, everybody, whether that is an internal user or an external user. We do things like Tech Tip Tuesday for internal staff, well, not, sorry, it's actually Tech Tip Thursday. Um, that's been changed. So every week we send out, um, a little tip on how to use our internal technology. And, you know, making sure that we have really good communication about what is going on with our users, what things are changing, um, because technology changes so quickly. Um, we made sure that, uh, we implemented a new help desk tool a couple of years ago that opened up the lines of communication between users that submitted tickets as well as the help desk. Before, we didn't really have communication like that. People would just send in tickets and have no idea necessarily when they were closed or what was done. So those are some of the other changes that we have made. And really, I would think when we talk about a good customer experience is we really try not to be typical IT people. Uh, one of the things that I always like to ask people is, what do you think I do? And no one ever guesses an IT person. And I would say that I see that across many, many of our staff in our department. We are a cloud-first, um, organization and that really goes into the one above it. And as we have replaced software or looked for new solutions over the past few years, we always look to see if, um, there is a hosted solution that meets that need first, instead of putting things on promise. And we have very, very little that actually, um, is on a server within, um, the OCHN data center. We want to make sure that staff have the technology and tools that they need to do their job. And one of the reasons why I talked about a cloud-first strategy is because we were in Google and now in 365, um, one of the things that, that was able to do is to give us a work-from-anywhere environment. And who would have thought, when we started talking about this, um, a couple of years ago, and we had that vision that a pandemic would happen and where that would really come into play. We want to make sure that staff have the right equipment that they need to do their job, that it's in good working order. You know, sometimes, especially maybe whether it's in governmental organizations or healthcare providers, you know, people think that, um, you know, we don't have good technology. And I think for here, that is something that is not true. We have really great technology. Um, we also want to make sure that we have our technology at the lowest cost possible and that it's easy to maintain. In the past three years, almost all of our IT infrastructure has went out to RFP or RFQ, um, and has been replaced with more, um, cost-effective options that we are able to maintain. Uh, one of the things that when, you know, people, when you say technology, everybody, you know, kind of shrieks and, you know, shrinks back and says, oh my gosh, the price tag with that. And so always making sure that we are getting the best value for our dollar for what we do. Um, as I talked about the changes that we've made at a high level, we have been able to save about $130,000 annually with the move to 365, meaning that we are no longer using Power BI. We use 365 for phones. And we also put out an RFP or request for proposal for our internet, which was another substantial savings. Um, as we all know, it's really, um, cybersecurity and keeping data safe is something that's really important to people, um, to people that we serve, our employees. And that is something that we're always making sure that we keep in mind when we purchase technology, when we implement technology, and also making sure that we're seeing, um, a breadth of current best practices for security. And then that balance of how do we have a good user experience and security? Because if someone can't access something, access something because of, um, security is too tight, we really haven't accomplished what we set out to do. Um, we have our IT plan that is based on our organizational annual plan as well as receives other input from departments about what their IT needs are and what their projects, um, that they need us to work with them on. Next slide, please. So as we talk about our fiscal year, uh, 20 annual and strategic planning goal, we have one that's technology and innovation. So, uh, one of them was to, um, collaborate with providers to promote the use of technology. So one of the things that we were doing, and unfortunately it got sidelined due to COVID, is looking at using smart speakers, um, in people's homes to be able to promote independence. Uh, we will partner with organizations, with our providers if they have IT questions. Um, we also distributed, as you guys know, 150 tablets earlier in the year, and we are in the process of hopefully being able to get, um, a larger amount of tablets with internet out to the people that we serve. Jenny?
Um, our next item is a transition to a new analytical tool for our reporting and dashboard. So last year, we started looking into the Microsoft Power BI and identified that, um, you know, this tool is a lot, a lot more user-friendly. Within the IT department, we identified that it allowed for a lot more flexibility in creating dashboards, um, and allowed just for us to be able to create them faster and easier to, to change, um, requests from, from users if, if needed. Um, so we're currently in the transition of moving over to Microsoft Power BI. Um, we have currently moved over all of our internal dashboards to this new tool. So everyone at OCHN has been using Power BI since about May or June. Um, and now we're in the transition of moving all of our providers over to the new tool. So that will be, uh, completed by March 1st for all providers, and then we will stop using our current tool. Um, you know, some other decisions in moving to this was, um, for one, everyone at OCHN can have access with our current tool. It's limited based on licenses. So it's not like people have to, you know, go into a meeting to show other people. They can all have access to the, uh, the dashboards they need. Um, and also, as we move forward with this tool, we've identified that it's going to be a lot easier for IT to work with all staff to maybe be able to create their own dashboards and reports based off the data that we give them. With, again, with our current tool, it's not very user-friendly. Um, so moving forward, people will have the ability to, you know, pull some data and create their own charts. Um, the next item is reporting of admissions, discharge, and transfer. So last October, um, we actually started submitting ADTs through MYHEN. Um, so what this is based on is all people that are admitted to one of our core providers, um, admitted or discharged, um, an ADT is sent to MYHEN. MYHEN is the Michigan Health Information Network. And any person out there that belongs to MYHEN, um, and is associated with that person, um, can see that information. Um, so we've been receiving ADTs since about 2015. So if someone that we are connected with goes into a hospital out in the community, um, we get that alert into our EHR system. So, you know, we, we identify that our information is also very beneficial to everyone out there for care coordination. So, um, we started submitting that last year. Um, we worked, you know, with our current EHR vendor PCE, and again, MYHEN to develop all that. Um, and then we also, this is also a PIHP requirement for FY21. So, um, we are ahead of the game on that. And then the last item is health information exchanges. Um, you know, again, we've worked with our EHR and our providers to create HIEs so we can exchange data between our systems. Um, you know, we do have some providers that use our current system and a lot that use their own. And, you know, we've created a lot of HIEs that can now, you know, submit data in real time back and forth through our systems. Um, and, you know, it's an ongoing initiative for OCHN and our provider network to continue to develop more HIEs. Next slide, please. Um, we are funded through our administrative budget for the whole IT department. Next slide. So this is just a list. We'll go through more specifically in the next slides of all the rules and responsibilities that we currently have in our IT department. Next slide. So the application specialist and analyst. So the main rule of these, uh, positions are to support the development of OCHN's, uh, electronic healthcare record, ODIN, and administrative system, uh, submission to, of the state data and help desk support. So, you know, we have one staff who is an application specialist and on a daily basis, her main role is to, uh, monitor our ticketing system for all tickets coming in for ODIN. Um, again, that would be from any internal staff using ODIN or our provider network that uses it. Um, you know, we call it an EHR, but it also holds a lot of administrative information. You know, it holds information about our utilization management, um, recipient rights, uh, quality. So, you know, it, it holds a lot more than just basic EHR info. Um, but that role again, um, receives all the tickets, monitors the ticketing queue, and works with those, um, users submitting the ticket. And then we have two staff who are application analysts. So again, they still also do tickets and monitor that, but their main role is to identify changes that are being requested and work with teams, um, within OCHN and the provider network to make these changes. Um, again, they, they have to work with teams. So they might have weekly meetings, um, to gather all the requirements. Once they gather those requirements, they write it up for our EHR vendor to make those changes and then, um, get it deployed with the help of, um, the department requesting it or the person requesting it. Um, these roles are also responsible for submitting data to the state. So, you know, our two largest data sets that we submit to the state is our encounter data, which consists of all the services that are reported to us from our providers. And then also our BHTS, which is, um, it stands for behavioral health treatment episode data, and it's, uh, demographic information. So when someone's admitted or discharged from services, it collects specific information about that person, and that gets reported to the state and is used for different, um, areas of the state's, um, analysis of the PIHP. Um, next slide. So this is just a chart of, uh, tickets for a year. Um, as you can see, usually October is our busiest year. We have a lot of changes that are usually implemented at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, um, our numbers are pretty high in October. They usually level out. Um, you know, you can see a dip in March and April, and then it picks back up towards the end of the fiscal year. Next slide, please. So the next role we're going to review is the database slash data warehouse administrator. So that we have two DBAs, um, and their main functions are database design, performance monitoring, security troubleshooting, as well as backup and data recovery. So their main role is to ensure all the data coming into OCHN is accurate and reliable. So, you know, on a daily basis, um, you know, the majority of our data is received from our, um, ODIN system, but we also receive data, um, from other formats from our providers, um, data from the state that we, um, integrate into our databases and our data warehouse. So their responsibility is to, you know, process all that data, but then to also ensure that data coming in is accurate. So if something does get changed in a system or in our EHR, that the new record comes in that when it flows out- That the new record comes in that when it flows out in the reports and dashboards, that it's, it's valid and complete for the end user. So again, they work on processes to ensure that the data is loaded also in a timely manner. So all of our, you know, reports and dashboards are up to date. You know, just to give an example of something, we get a file from the state which includes all of our encounter data. And they have a job that runs nightly that bums that up against our internal data. So then we can easily identify any missing encounter data to the state. Next slide. And business intelligence specialist. So we have three staff whose main role is to, you know, create dashboards and reports for OCHN and the provider network. With our, with our new tool and even our existing tool, we have a centralized area, you know, for OCHN to access all of our dashboards. That are available out there and it's also, you know, the same reports and dashboards that the providers have access to. So again, this team works closely with many departments. You know, they work with the clinical department, quality provider network to gather requirements to create the dashboards and reports. So again, they might, you know, have a report dashboard that takes a few months to build. And they work with them on a weekly basis to create, to create that dashboard. And then to deploy it out for use by the provider network or just for internal staff. Next slide.
All right, so our infrastructure support team is who takes care of our hardware, Office 365, audio visual. Our phone systems and cybersecurity. This group is really what is what I would call, you know, a part of the backbone of the organization. Because they are doing that back office work. And they are always working with providers, they are working, you know, because sometimes we'll have providers that can't maybe send us email or have other challenges. And of course, all of our internal users we are working with on a daily basis. For infrastructure support, we have a systems engineer, assistance administrator and assistance administrator too. The way that I had, that I structured these a couple of years ago. Is think of kind of like a Venn diagram between the three of these where there are some overlap. And what I wanted to make sure was that we didn't have any one who had very siloed experience. Or a set of knowledge that wasn't able to be shared. Our systems administrator one does overlap the most with the help desk and helps pick up tickets. Next slide, please. We have the help desk, which is, you know, really focused more on. Excuse me. Our OCHN users, when they have trouble with printers, 365. You know, meaning I can't open a file, something's not working, their phones, their computers. They get new equipment ready for deployment. So we are doing some desktop or I'm sorry, laptop replacements right now. And they are getting those ready to go out to staff. So this is another one where they are working with everybody in our organization on a regular basis. The person who does this is we have one main help desk person who is an information technology specialist. And then we have that systems administrator one that I talked about that there's overlap between those two positions. Next slide, please. So this shows our non-IT, I'm sorry, non-Odin IT ticket for calendar year 2020. You can see that we went down in April and we have come back up and then we are leveling off. Next slide, please. So for me, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so for, you know, person served, again, majority of these roles do not have direct contact with people face to face. But you know, we do create a lot of stuff or a lot of our dashboards and reports to help decisions about services and supports. So again, we have many departments that do face, you know, the consumer or the person directly or doing services for them. And you know, we can create reports for them to be able to easily identify information that they need to make the decisions that they need to. We're also working, again, we work with our EHR vendor PCE to create a portal so people can access their own information. So currently they, you know, they can get a login to this portal. And it has information, you know, about the services they've received. About, you know, their own personal health record information that has been collected by their provider. We're also looking at ways to, you know, have the ability to do signing documents through that. You know, sometimes they have to sign a consent with everything that's happened with COVID, that's been more difficult. So you know, we're looking at other ways to use that portal so people can access it from anywhere. Again, you know, we support, you know, many staff at OCHN that do have to go out into the community. And work, you know, directly with people that we serve. And we ensure that they have the right tools to do that, that they have a laptop, you know, they have access to all the documents that they need. They have access to Odin, everything to be able to provide the services that they need to, to the, to the people that we serve. And you know, lastly, we are, we are responsible for reporting all of the encounter data and to make sure that it's accurate. That data is used on a yearly basis by the state, you know, when they do rate setting. And when they determine funding for the people that we serve. Next slide. So again, as I spoke about earlier, we're, you know, currently utilizing health information exchanges between our systems. We've worked with our providers and our vendors to create these HIEs to create efficiencies and approved care coordination. Just to give a couple of examples, you know, you know, we have authorization data, we have demographic data. Benefit plan information that all flows through the HIE from, you know, one system to OCHN's Odin system in a real time manner. So you know, it eliminates providers having to go into Odin to do things that they can now do in their own system. So that again, is an ongoing effort for OCHN and the provider network that we work towards. Our dashboards, you know, our, our providers have access to all the same dashboards that we use here at OCHN to monitor them. So it makes it very easy to make sure that they know what we're looking at when we identify areas, you know, of concern. Or areas where everyone's doing well, you know, they can point them right to that dashboard that shows that. And again, you know, all of our dashboards go down, right down to the person level. So if there is something out there that needs to be identified, they can easily download that information. At their own convenience and get that information. And then lastly, we provide Odin and dashboard support to our providers. So our IT ticketing system, all of our internal staff and our provider staff have access to that. Or they can submit tickets related to any type of Odin issue or dashboard issue. And then they get connected directly with the people that can help them do that. And also for Odin, we have, you know, quarterly. User groups, we have two of them, we have one for all of our SUD providers and then we have another one for the remaining providers. So you know, that, that user group just identifies maybe improvements in the system that we can do. Or you know, if there's any issues that are outstanding, then we can address them then. Next slide, please.
Jenny, you have a question from Jonathan.
Okay.
Hi Jenny and Diana, thank you so much. This is, I always find the data part so fascinating and of course, I know Nicole is a data geek too. So I always wonder, because in years past, we've had some of our core providers move in and out of our systems. Do all of our core providers at this point, are they able to send us the data interface to get our data into Odin and back out?
So you know, the core providers that have went off. You know, we're working towards, you know, all the ones that we have available because we have multiple HIEs available. But yes, the majority are using all of them, so the data can submit between both systems. And then we continue to develop new ones each year we're planning on.
I know it's been a challenge in the past, sometimes collecting the data, the statistics that we need. Or the, or even some of the notes of the integration that we've needed through some of the providers. And I know some of them left us and went to other products. And we were waiting on interfaces, so I'm glad to hear that that's not as big a problem anymore.
Yeah, we work towards it, yep.
All right, so from community impact. You know, one of the, the ways that we think of community is, is through our building. That's one example, well, when we were in the building. And that being a place for, you know, gatherings and training. So that has been, you know, great, but there has been an IT component for that in making sure. That we are able to support the AV. From community support, also we have our data and our dashboards to monitor quality, performance and outcomes. And you know, one of the things that we recently did, and this is kudos to Jenny and her team. And as we've talked about that move to Power BI. Is that we are able to finally have dashboards and data on our website. Next slide, please. OCHN takes the opportunity whenever we can to be on a work group. Or to be able to give input at the state level. So we participate in multiple work groups. Edit, the CIO forum, BHTS, MyHIM. You know, that promotion of care coordination through admission, discharges and transfers. One of the philosophies, one of the things that OCHN believes is that. Care coordination is at the person level. And one of the ways that we can help with care coordination at the person level is through the use of health information exchange. Data and technology is what helps us meet those requirements for our PIHP and CMHSP contracts. And you know, we always share technology innovation whenever we can with other PIHPs, providers across the state. We, if we have the opportunity to present, we will present. But we will also just, you know, meet with people and say, this is what we've been doing or, you know, and share information. Next slide, please. Are there any questions? Mel Kaia?
Yes, um, thank you Diana and Jennifer. This was a very, very comprehensive overview and I really appreciate seeing and hearing everything that's going on. I always applaud our staff for being forward thinking. This COVID has really pointed up to strengths within the organization and I commend you for that. But my question is, has there any thought been given to surveying the board? To make sure that all board members have adequate tech in order to do our jobs? I saw the providers, I saw the staff, but the board was not included in this presentation at all. And it's no disrespect to you or your department. But I've noticed from the time I first got on the board in 2007, that there seems to be. A waning of concern from, from the administration, I guess is the best way to put it. And I understand why we've had several CEO changes, we've had an interim. So everybody, we had COVID, so everybody's. Focus hasn't been on the same things at the same time. But the reason I bring this up is because early on in the transfer, I was having my own personal issues with technology. And I reached out for help and I was not able to get any, I was able to resolve it on my own. But that disappointed me because I felt like if, as a board member, if I needed help with technology to do my job. That I was appointed to do, I should be able to get assistance and I wasn't able to. So this is a new fiscal year, the first of the year, we're going to be losing some members, gaining some more members. And new people coming on the board don't know how it used to be. But it was a time when we all had tablets that were self-sufficient, we didn't have to worry about internet connections. You know, whatever was needed for the individual members, we were able to get that. So I'm bringing that up, not expecting an answer today, but I would. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I haven't discussed this with anybody. But I just feel that it, I think we need to at least assess the needs of the board members to make sure everyone. Is comfortable and competent with the, with what they have, that they're able to fully participate. And do their jobs well. And if that's not the case, then it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
All right, thanks for that Mel Kaia. And you're right, we did have Chromebooks in the past that board members had. And you know, what we found at that time is they weren't being used by most folks. However, we have had a change and so that is something that I will take back to leadership. So thank you for that, you're welcome. Dr. Hans?
Thank you for this presentation. My question is about, I would like to hear if there are any challenges that you face. And in looking into this fiscal year, any new ideas as technology evolves continuously? And my third question is about the impact of the pandemic, if that has in any way impacted your functionality.
Yes, those are also great questions. So I'm going to take the pandemic one first, Dr. Hans. And one of the things that we had really, you know, we hadn't prepared for a pandemic. But what we had as an organization was this vision for people to be able to work from anywhere. And as I talked about, we don't have many applications that are hosted at OCHN. So what that means is that when the pandemic, when the pandemic hit. We did have about 60 people who did not have laptops, they had desktops, so we hurried up. We got desktops and, I'm sorry, we got laptops for them. And got those into their hands so that they would be able to work from home. And because of the fact that we were using, you always see us with our headsets, that's because that is, these are our phones. These are what we use to answer our OCHN phone. So we were able to send people home, they didn't have a headset, we were able to give them a headset. They were able to have access to data, their files, Odin and all of those things. So we were really, really well positioned from the, the pandemic aspect. You know, of course, we've had, you know, that's the staff impact. But then you have the impact to people served and telehealth and internet challenges are not having technology. And that is something that we continue to try to work on. For the challenges that we face, you know, one of the things as, as a CIO is I always worry about. Having a cybersecurity attack. And one of the things that we have also seen with COVID is that there has been an uptick or increase in attacks. You know, just across the board, not necessarily towards us, but in general. So making sure that we continue to stay on top of our security, that we're educating our staff. You know, so that has been one of my number one concerns. If you would have asked me six months ago, what would I think that would make us need to enact a business continuity plan? Which means that we're not in the office and we're able to operate. I would have said a cybersecurity attack, I never would have said a pandemic, but I was wrong. So, so that would be my, my worry about the biggest challenge for us, Dr. Hans.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A follow-up, since there were a couple of things that I didn't really think about before you answered my question. Now with the cold weather coming in and probably there will be, you know, the scientists are talking about the second wave. We don't know if we will go again into a lockdown or anything similar to that. I'm concerned about the, the sense of isolation that the people that we serve might feel again. And I think accessibility to technology will be very important. And I think we should give some thought to that. I know it's, it's a, it costs money to provide technology to each of the people that we serve. I know it's, it costs money to provide technology to each of the people that we serve, but that is something that we should think about.
Yeah, and we agree with you 110%. And it is something not only Oakland has been, you know, working towards, but, you know, I would say across the state, whether you're a healthcare provider or a school. But specifically, as of right now, we are trying to get money and working with the county on, hopefully, we can get some CARES funding that would allow us to be able to get 1,000 tablets with prepaid internet for a year. So we have not secured that yet, but that's something that we're trying to do. And then we also continue to look for other opportunities for grants.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the work that you do, and that's commendable. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hans. Dr. Todd?
Hi, Jennifer and Diana, that was a great presentation, and I think your department's awesome. And also Sheila, I was having trouble getting connected when you were calling the role, but I'm here. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Todd. Sheila is amazing with technology. We love her. She helps us all the time.
Thanks.
We'll call you the quasi-IT person. All right, are there any other questions? Well, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to present more information about what our department does.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diana and Jennifer. That was very, very informative and helpful for all of us to understand more about your department. So, yeah, we are going to move on to Judy, who's going to be talking to us about the board elections and committees.
Thank you, Sarah. This is just kind of a refresher for some of you and maybe some new information for other newer board members. But as you know, next week at our October board meeting, we will be having our board officer elections. And we will also be selecting which committees we'd like to participate on. So as kind of an introduction, and again, like I said, a refresher, that's the purpose of the upcoming slides. So if Sheila would go to the next slide, that would be helpful. Thank you. First of all, let me just say that all of the information in the upcoming slides is based on the information in our current bylaws. And also that we are currently a board of 11. So our majority for voting will be six members affirmative will elect. These are the, kind of the nuts and bolts of how we do our elections. The fact is that we do them once a year. There are no term limits. Each term is one year. And again, we're a majority of six, so that will constitute a proper affirmative vote. The votes are for the chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary, which are the three official board officers. Next slide, please. This is kind of a rundown on what some of the essential elements are of being a board chair. And they're very comprehensive, but there are also some ancillary kinds of activities that go on if you are the board chair that kind of come up from nowhere. And so if you choose to be a person in the process of selection for board chair, you also need to know that there are things that will pop up that will require your attention. And those happen multiple times a month. Not all dramatic, but sometimes they are. And you need to be ready to make decisions based on your good instincts and the rules of the road, so to speak. So maybe next slide. The vice chair is kind of a nebulous role. Obviously, you are to be the person to stand in for the board chair when the board chair is not available. And I think that in the future, if in the rewrite or review of our bylaws, you want to designate a role for a vice chair, that might be something to consider. Also with board secretary, it sounds kind of daunting. You do not have to be responsible for taking the actual minutes. You get excellent administrative support on this, but you are responsible for signing things like the notice of meetings. And also, you will be responsible for taking ownership of the submission of minutes. If you are board secretary, you also will be required, if no staff is present, to take minutes for a closed session and for any other meeting where the board is present in an open meeting where there is no staff support. Sometimes that's happened at a study session. Next slide, please. We have three standing committees. The two that we're most familiar with are Business Operations and Policy Management. Business Operations has five members, Policy Management has six. And all of the composition of the numbers and the composition of the Executive Director Performance Review Committee is spelled out in our bylaws, and it is very specific. So along the way, what you need to consider is if you want to be a committee chair, a board officer, et cetera, that this is an element also of that role. The pivotal piece at this point in time is that Policy Management and Business Operations can be separate committees, but our bylaws permit that they can meet as the committee of the whole. And when that happens, the facilitation is done alternately by the chairs of Policy Management and Business Operations. Next slide, please. This is, as spelled out in our bylaws, again, what the essential roles are for each committee, this being Policy Management. This, these are the areas that are identified as requiring attention. Many times, people say, why are there six members on Policy Management and five on Business Operations? And historically, the explanation is that our emphasis is on Policy Management, which is the more strategic function. And that is where our effort is focused. Obviously, next slide, please. Business operations is also essential, but it's not where our emphasis lies. The purpose being to have, make, or to assure that the finances are in place to carry out what our strategic effort is focused on. And this just basically tells you that you have a committee chair and vice chair, as is required in our bylaws. And it has proven to be quite an essential element when we've had board member changes. At times, we have been left without representation. And I think that we need to keep that in mind next week when we make our decisions, that we need a chair and vice chair. Next slide, please. Again, the essential elements of the Business Operations Committee. And again, it is essential that we have a chair and a vice chair, should there be any vacancies of any sort, for whatever reason. Next slide, please. The eval committee is prescribed, again, in our bylaws. The one piece that is at the discretion of the board chair is if we have, and hopefully, we always will, have people on our board who have lived experiences and are currently receiving services. And if there is more than one person, it is up to the board chair to determine who will participate on the eval committee. That happens once a year on the anniversary of the signing of the contract with the CEO. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is just to remind us what our kind of nuts and bolts are, that we have monthly meetings, that our standing committees meet, and that is posted properly. And we set our calendar for each year, including our study sessions. Whether or not we have study sessions can be at the discretion of the board month by month, but we do set that up. And that the expectation is that each board member will attend. If a person is, a board member is unable to attend, that proper notice is required. And then if, in fact, someone who has been appointed to our board for some reason or another is unable for a period of time to participate, the Board of Commissioners will be notified that they have not fulfilled the expectation of their appointment. So, next slide. Questions, if there are any, I'd be happy to answer them. I would add as a footnote that next week, when we elect a new board chair, that person will, after their election, be the facilitator for the remainder of the board meeting. So are there any questions?
Hi, this is Hadass. I have a question.
Sure.
So you did such a great job, Judy, explaining all of that. And we kind of talked a little bit about this. So I just want to back up a little bit and just kind of have a tiny discussion on it. PHIP, but we're also a community health network. They're not the same thing, correct?
We're a PIHP and a CMHSP. Is that what you're?
Right, okay.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, sometimes, because we work as one, so it sometimes confuses me. So the second one, I'm pretty sure, I looked up a couple of the other agencies, and I just wondered, and in the state, it talks about having a treasurer as part of your board. Now, the PHIPs don't, but the other ones typically do. So I was just wondering if there's a reason we do or we don't. And, I mean, I can see a reason to have one. I kind of can't see a reason not to have one, except that maybe in the past, because before we became both, were we the PHIP and not the other thing, or is vice versa?
Actually, I guess one of my benefits is my historical perspective, I guess. We did, at one point in time, have a treasurer. We didn't for a long time. This discussion came up. We did, in fact, elect a treasurer. The treasurer at that time was, in fact, the chair of the Business Operations Committee. But since we don't have control over the budget, over time, the decision was made to no longer continue that role. That's obviously something always up for discussion. If that comes up when we're looking at our bylaws, et cetera, that's a reasonable topic to bring up again.
Yeah, I mean, I think we never got to look at the bylaws, and you are voting. So since you're voting next week or whenever, I don't know if it's, I just, I don't know if the board would want to have a discussion at all about that. Because my concern is not that, you know, Anya does an incredible job, and we don't have control of the budget, nor would we want to have control of the budget. However, the only thing we see are costs that are over $100,000. And I think that, like, a treasurer would be someone who would see, you know, costs at 50 or costs at 25, and it's just a responsibility to be fiduciary. It's a fiduciary responsibility, just to be, have another set of eyes on everything to make sure everything is going, you know, exactly how Anya wants it to go. I mean, I would think, if I were in her position, I would want another set of eyes. I mean, I'm not trying to speak for Anya, but I just, since we're voting next week, and we don't often do the bylaws or vote on them, I just thought maybe we could have a discussion on it, if anyone else wants to say anything. I mean, also, I think, you know, with Jonathan and Eric on the board, they would make great treasurers. And our Business Operations Committee doesn't really do review of what's going on in the budget or review, you know, of any of that, except once a year, we just look at it. So there's no one financially responsible, not responsible, but knowledgeable of even what's going on, because that's not what the business ops does. So anyway, just wanted to throw that out for discussion.
Sure, but that is something business ops, I suppose, could do. Let's hear some other thoughts, and then we can revisit that, okay? Steve?
Yeah, I just, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but the position of treasurer would be treasurer of the board of directors, not treasurer of OCHN. So we had a treasurer who never did anything. We don't have a budget. We don't have any money to discuss. We don't spend anything. So there's nothing really for a treasurer to do, the way we're set up. Now, I agree with Judy, when we redo the bylaws, and I think we probably already would, we'd be doing it if it worked for the pandemic. But it's not, like I say again, it's not treasurer of OCHN, it's treasurer of the board of directors.
Well, can I, I don't, am I still on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay, so I don't actually, I kind of disagree a little bit. We do, we have a budget. We have $60,000 that this board has spent over the years on food, over the one year, one year is our budget, food. Or we use, I mean, we're using money that's been provided by, you know, the state or the county. And even if it's just that $60,000, and what it's being spent on, if it's conferences or housing, I'm not saying, or, you know, there is money that this board, someone's got to be reviewing what that money's being spent on, too. So, and just like, the board chair is, I don't know, I just am bringing it up again.
Okay, Jonathan?
Thank you. I sort of, in a way, agree with you when I look at the calendar. It was about a year ago this time, we were starting to brush off the bylaws and our operational rules to see, could we improve them, could we change them? And then we had Annette announce her resignation. So I think that we probably should move forward with our current situation of the roles and responsibilities we have, but then to actively look again at changing our constitution and bylaws to see what we need to do to evolve as the needs of the organization have evolved. And then if it means adding another officer, then we could vote, change that, and then add that midterm, if it makes sense.
Again, when we did it before, it did require an amendment to our bylaws, but I think that everything should always be on the table. However, I would caution that when that discussion happens, that there's a clear definition of what that role would be and what the scope is. So I think that for now, going forward with the chair, vice chair, secretary election might be the most prudent, but again, all conversations are open. Mel Kaia? Mel Kaia?
Thank you, Judy. I just wanted to hear from you what the actual election is going to look like.
What? Okay, what we will be doing is voting separately. For, we don't vote a slate. We vote individually for chair, vice chair, and secretary. Those are the elections. After that will be the committee selection, which is a selection, not an election. And what happens then is people will choose which committee they would like to be a part of. And when those committees are set, there will be an affirmation of a committee chair and vice- And when those committees are set, there will be an affirmation of a committee chair and vice chair. Is that close to what you were after?
It's close. Um, in, in the past, we went office by office and people were able to nominate people or people nominated themselves and they were given space to discuss with the rest of the board why they felt that they would, are the person for that particular position. I guess that's what I'm asking, if that's going to be the similar procedure this, next week.
When we have had two individuals interested in the same position, that's when we brought into play, and it's essential to it, to have each candidate, however they're nominated, state why they think they are probably the best qualified and have the most interest in whatever role they're choosing to be elected, to which they're choosing to be elected. So yes, if, if there is one nomination, typically, we haven't had that. If there are two interested parties, then we will certainly, I, in my mind, it's always worked best to have each of the people who are up for, who have been nominated and are up for election to have the opportunity just to share why they think they could best fulfill that role and what they bring to it.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Anyone else? Really? Okay, so next week, when we have our elections, it will be early again. I, I, the way I've set up the agenda for next week is following our story that inspires hope. We will go into the election process. The first office up for election will be board chair. And whoever is elected as board chair will then continue to facilitate the meeting. The reason we do that is it's kind of a good way to get your feet wet and probably the most supportive environment. If you need a question answered or something along those lines, then you've got the opportunity to get that support. So, other questions? If not, thank you, Sarah.
All right, well, thank you, Judy. It was full information, appreciate it. So we will go ahead and move on to other business. Is there any other business? I do, um, I guess I'll bring up, just because I saw it in the emails, is just the conference, the, um, CMH conference that Sheila sent out to everyone. So I suppose for folks to take a look at their emails, if they were interested in that conference. And then I see a hand up, but I don't know who's, oh.
You were reading my mind. I was just going to ask you to bring up the conference.
All right, when is that registration due by?
Um, I think we asked to have it back by the 19th, so, um, next week, so.
All right, thank you. All right, and this will be our second and final opportunity for a public comment. Christine, is there anything that's come through? Christine still on?
Um, I can.
I presume nothing.
Yeah, I, I've got the right form open right now. She, there is no public comment and I don't see anything in the chat.
Okay, sounds good. All right, uh, we will move on to board member comments. If you want to just call the roll, Sheila, please.
Sure. Mr. Furman?
I would like to thank Diana and her team for the IT presentation tonight. Very informative as usual. And I just like you, I know, I know she's going to be chairing part of the meeting next week. Thank you to Judy for her work as chair. And I would say, overall, just the inclusion of board member comments at each meeting, I really think it's worthwhile. So thank you for your time as chair of this board, Judy. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Adam. You can't see me smiling, my camera's off, but thank you.
Ms. Bernard?
Uh, I want to thank everybody for the meeting today. Judy also for your time and commitment to the agency. And also to the IT department for all your help. And thank you so much.
Mr. Torres?
Oh, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, I, I don't have any comments, I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. Lindemere?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Namie Dyer?
Um, yep, just what everybody else has been saying. Thanks, everybody, for their presentations. Judy, I know you won't, you know, thank you for, for all of your time. I'm glad that I at least had some opportunity for a few months to have worked with you. Certainly wish it could have been in person, of course, but, you know, it is what it is. But thank you for all of your guidance. Um, and have a good night, everybody.
Mr. Landsman?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I did enjoy tonight's conference call, only because it was on the topic of IT and data. And I do get geeked out in terms of data. But it reminds me that we've had a few initiatives in the past that have been data-driven, that Nicole have been involved with and others have been, to identify folks that are in what we call the high-high space, high cost, high need, to see how we can improve the continuity of care and the coordination of care with the, you know, the, the physical health side, along with the mental health and development disabled side. So I'm wondering if we can't do a, you know, continue on that thread and just expand that. I know that the state's looking for us to take that lead. I'm just hoping that we can, um, you know, just turn that, you know, move that dial a little bit, you know, power it up, if you will. And as well, look at some of the telehealth kinds of services that we'd started to look at before. But maybe we could do a better job as it relates to, um, the ED department, transitions of care to common ground and to other services. So I'm just hoping that we'll just add to what we do in terms of data-driven direction and go from there. But thank you again, everyone, for participating.
Dr. Hans?
Great presentation, especially with the IT. Learned quite a few new things, thank you. And I want to commend, thank Judy for all her commitment and dedication to the organization for so many years. Thank you.
Ms. Newman?
Uh, thank you. I really, really enjoyed tonight's meeting. Not just the overview, but the fact that the, the agenda was not so packed that I felt like my brain was fried at the end of the meeting from information overload. So whoever put together today's agenda, kudos to you. I think we can do a much better job when we have more time to digest the information that's given to us. The staff does an outstanding job of preparing themselves to come before us. And I appreciate having them having enough time to give us the information, to field our questions. And, um, and I really appreciate that. And I also want to thank Judy for her, not just her service, but her knowledge. It's so much that she knows that nobody else knows on this board and it's going to be missed. I know we still have you for a few more months. But, um, it's a hold that, that won't be able to be easily filled. And I, I respect you highly as a person and as a leader. And I, I think you, um, have done an excellent job of shepherding us through some difficult times. So thank you for that. And, and just thank you to everybody for a great meeting tonight.
Dr. Todd?
Hi, I got a couple of things. One, same thing everybody else says about Judy. A lot of you haven't been around, but I was the one that talked Judy into taking the board chair position 17 years ago, when I first got on the board. And lots of things over the years, she's done an excellent job. I don't know that anybody else could do it. Secondly, flu shots, really important. This is the perfect time to get them. They'll last till the end of the flu session, season. And, um, if you're over 65, there's an extra strong version, that's the one you should get. On the telehealth, technically, since the Supreme Court, Michigan Supreme Court overturned Governor Whitmer's emergency order, the permission to meet by, by tele, whatever you call it, by IT methods, is no longer in effect, although everybody's still doing it. There is a bill in the Senate. I can't remember the number. I saw it on Tim Skubik's show, they were discussing it. And then probably the Senate will pass that and then the House will pass it to allow people to still meet online. But as, technically, as of now, we're back to the way we were before the emergency orders. So, um, thank you, Judy, for everything you've done over the years. And everybody stay safe.
Ms. Summers?
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate the kind words. Not sure I'm worthy, but I appreciate them nonetheless. I have a bit of a cautionary tale. I have two dear friends, a married couple, who are currently in Troy, Beaumont, in the COVID unit. They have been profoundly careful. They're wonderful parents to two people that we serve. And dad went out one night with some friends, brought the virus home, and they're both struggling. So please, please, be very careful. Take all the thought to heart. Whatever it is that you can do to keep yourself safe and your family safe, please, it's so worth the effort. They are just distraught over the fact that they can't be with their kids, who need all kinds of extra support, but are just one night out, one night out. That's all it took. So keep that in mind. And I will see you all next week for my swamp song as chair. Thank you.
Dr. Guadalupe? Dr. Guadalupe?
I was on mute, sorry. No, I was just saying, I agree with everyone's sentiments tonight. I think great presentation. Thank you to Judy, who's taught me a lot, being on the board so far. I appreciate, particularly with the CEO search and, my gosh, we spent lots of time together. So I will miss that. And just, I know with committee of the whole, there's not many community members, I don't think, out there. But I just want community members to continue to know that there are services available for folks. I, I continue to hear in the community how stressed our children, teens, adolescents are with school being virtually, starting to transition back. Parents still trying to juggle how to teach their kids at, at home, virtually support them while working. And there's a lot of stress going on out in the world right now. And just having folks reach out to the providers and to the support systems that are, are there. And if you're not finding it at one place, keep persevering until you get the help that you need. Because there's a lot of people out there that can help and be a resource. Thank you. So with that, uh, we are ending. We're early tonight, so I hope everyone has a good week. And we'll see everyone at the board meeting next week. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody. See you next week.
Just remember, no one ever complains when a meeting ends early.
Yes.